We're walking up, I said good morning, so that'll tell you how long the day it's been already. It is six o'clock, I know that we've got some folks that are in and maybe a couple filtering in still. Public comments, if you want to do public comments, the sign up sheets are back there. We allow, as a court, we've adopted rules of the quorum, we adopted those rules about seven years ago whenever I came onto this court. And so we allow the public to get up and speak for the three minutes and we love to hear what the public has to say, okay? So with that being said, we are here on the ninth day of December, it is 6:00 PM. And we are here for our public hearing, number one is our public hearing to discuss proposed budget for fiscal year October 1, 2025 through September 30th, 2026, and hear public comments. That is in local government code 111.007. Item number two is citizens to be heard, do we have citizens to be heard this morning, Ms. Lee out, or this afternoon? All right, Mr. Bering.
Good evening, Court, good evening, Commissioners. I just wanted to tell y'all thank y'all, y'all are doing a good job. Thank you to Jamie, Ms. Broadway, JP's Road and Bridge, Beth, Maintenance. Y'all are running this county great. You won't make everybody happy, but y'all are making a majority of us happy, so keep it up, good job.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Any other citizens to be heard, public hearing, okay, then we're going to move into our public meeting to discuss proposed tax rate. And item number one is discuss Karnes County, Texas, 2025 proposed tax rates. A is discuss general fund maintenance and operating tax rate. B is acknowledge there is no general fund interest in sinking tax rate. And C, discuss road and bridge special maintenance and operating tax rate. Into the special meeting, so welcome again, everybody, it's good to see you packed house. It truly does make me smile to see folks interested in what we're doing with their taxpayer dollars. We do have a quorum present, we don't have anybody absent, so if you all stand, remove your hats if you still have them on. And we're going to pray and then we will do our pledge of allegiance, okay? Father, we come before you now and we thank you for your greatness. We thank you for that when we're weak, you're strong. Lord, the devil is scheming and we know he desires to keep us from spending time with you. Don't let him win. Give us a measure of your strength so that we might not give in to discouragement, deception, and doubt. Help us to honor you in all of our ways. Father, forgive us for the way that we complain about our circumstances. Forgive us for our bad attitude when things don't go our way. We want to see your hand in every part of every day, good or bad. Help us learn how to face every storm with confidence, knowing that you're in control even though we may not hear your voice or see your hand at work. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Item number five is citizens to be heard for our special meeting, do we have anybody signed up for our special meeting? None to speak, okay. Item number six is to discuss approve/disapprove setting base salaries for the elected officials for fiscal year 25, 26. This is local government code, we're required to post these and it is local government code 152.013. I will go through these line by line, A is the county judge and that salary is $80,000. B is the county clerk, $74,000. C is the district clerk, $74,000. D, E, F, and G are your justice of the pieces and they are each set at $60,000. H is your county attorney, $77,000. I is your county treasurer at $74,000. J is your tax assessor collector at $74,000. Constables 1, 2, 3, and 4 are items K, L, M, N, and they are all at $55,000. Our sheriff's salary is O and it is $90,000. Commissioner precinct 1, $74,000. Precinct 2 commissioner is $74,000. Commissioner precinct 3 is $74,000 and Commissioner precinct 4 is $74,000. Item number seven, discuss approve/disapprove adoption of the fiscal year 2026 budget for Karnes County, Texas. Local government code 111.008. I am the judge of that along with Mr. Tom Duke.
All right, Judge, so the only changes that we made from what's actually filed with county clerk this morning, we had an item for the district attorney, we added back in. The judge informed me yesterday, sent a bill 22, he applied for that grant, so we did put that into this budget. The copies that y'all have is 350,000 for the sheriff's department, 175 for the county attorney. Sheriff's department also applied for operational store which pays for overtime behind your grants, so all that is incorporated in the budget. There's no other changes, only change that's going to be unique to the court this year and I've been working with outside auditors. We're going to adopt, you're going to have two sets of budgets, you're going to have one that's on category basis and one that's detailed like y'all are used to. So the benefit of the category basis, and I'm going to let everyone know what the categories are. So the categories are category for personal services is 50, 51 is operations, 52 is non-capitalized, so those are assets that are not depreciated. And then the capital assets are category 53. So from this is, I'm going to read this directly from the outside auditors point, so the budget for court, I mentioned that they're adopting a budget based on the category totals. I think you would still want to stick to the line by line budget for cost controls, but if they can give you line item transfers, all they want as long as they don't change the category total, category totals will have to go through court. And this will help kind of you guys to understand everything and the court to understand how it fits all the categories. So our new budget certificate kind of outlines that. It basically mentions myself, the judge, and Jamie, it says the budget was adopted by expenditure categories and those are the ones I just mentioned. And the details provided in the informational part of the document, it's considered to be supplemental information. It is further ordered that all personnel changes, controlled assets, and capital outlay expenditures changes require approval by commissioners court. And then the budget has been adopted consistent with generally accepted county principles. That just gives us, you know, everyone, we got good controls on it, but that just gives us more flexibility as long as we don't go over the category.
For transparency, for some of the folks that weren't able to make the budget hearings, we, Commissioners, along with myself, dang near went line by line this year on the budget. And a lot of you that I see out there probably don't know how I do the budget as a budget officer for the court. Whenever I was elected in 2018, took office 2019, I had my secretary who had been with Judge Long and had been with the county for a little while. And I told him, I sat him down and I said, look, budget is going to be a little different this year. That I'm going to sit down with each elected official and I'm going to sit down with each department head and we're going to go through their budget line by line. And we're going to figure out what we want and we're going to figure out what we need and understand the difference between that. And so it's never a surprise whenever we get here and to any of the officials or the department heads whenever we sit down and this proposed budget goes to the Commissioners for us to talk about. There were a handful of changes on a $74 million plus budget this year. Obviously, there can be some numbers that are transcribed accidentally, there is nothing that is done nefariously in my mind, at least I hope not. I would pray that that doesn't happen. So there were a couple of changes that Commissioners did catch, a couple of changes that I believe that they wanted to implement. And those were reflected in the last budget, the budget workshop that we had. Tom has implemented those numbers into this budget that they have before them. And so just for transparency, I wanted the folks out in the audience to understand that, these men know that.
And Judge, we established a capital fund this time for all capital projects.
And before we do this, I need to go back to item number six, it was an action item, setting the base salaries for the elected officials, I apologize for that.
I'll make the motion to approve item number six as presented.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second, anybody opposed to that? None, okay, motion carries. And back to item number seven, we can continue with that.
I'll make the motion to approve the adoption of the fiscal year 2026 budget for Karnes County, Texas.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Yes, you may.
I apologize, sir. Sir, would now be a time to talk about the art bus before we vote on this budget?
That would be a good time to do that, yes, sir.
I apologize for not bringing that up sooner, but gentlemen, in front of y'all and also to the, to our community, I apologize that this hasn't been brought to our budget meeting. But there are public transportations currently operating in Karnes County, the art buses. They were brought in to us, was it February, I can't remember, they approached, it was early this year. Alamo Regional Transport came to us and said, we have this service we'd like to provide your community. It's going to cost $108,000 a year. And if you'll pay 25% of it, we'll get the rest of it covered by the other cities and with a grant match. Well, we had that amount prorated because we didn't use it for a full year. And we've started seeing use of it, but we've had mixed reviews back and forth. I've had some people say, I don't see anyone writing it, but on the other end, I see other people on it. Personally, I was at the Kennedy Food Bank Distribution yesterday and I saw three families come to the Food Bank Distribution on the art bus to pick up commodities for their family. Unfortunately, they didn't come to us ahead of time before our budget meetings and I don't think it was on any of our minds to add this back in. It was approved previously as a contingency item because it was a new thing. But I don't feel it would be right to have it covered by contingency this year because we know about it now. It's just none of us remembered to talk about it when we were in a budget meeting.
And to touch on that, we also, Commissioner Veatrick can attest to this, they didn't send us what's in front of us until yesterday, maybe?
Yesterday, sir.
So, yes, thank you.
So to continue having this public transportation for all of our community, it would cost the county $108,380. I, the people that I represent precinct one want this. I see that City of Kennedy has put a lot of money into working with this, they're buying bus signs. People are using it where I see it. I would like to continue to see this and gentlemen, I would like to add this back to our budget.
I, I'm torn on this because a few, well, about a month ago, I was talking to the mayor of Karn City. And he said, you know, I've been watching it, and Karn City, I believe, funded it, they prorated funding for it through there up to, up to, through today. And he said, I watch that and I just don't see a lot of people, Karn City, Fall City. I said, I understand that. So I started paying more attention to it whenever I go to HEB or if I have to go to Walmart or in Kennedy if I'm eating, and I do see riders in that area. Commissioner Veatrick made a impactful statement to me on this yesterday and he said, I don't want to throw something away without giving them the full opportunity to make it work. And I agree with that, I think that we fund it for a year. See if they can, if they can get some ridership going on it. And then we look at it again next year and we say, you know, this $108,000 is, we're not really getting our bang for our buck for it. So that's my discussion on it, Commissioners, y'all are welcome to, other Commissioners, y'all are welcome to speak on it too.
I agree with that, I think that's what we had spoke about, giving them a chance to try and make it, because usually any business, it takes at least a year being in service to see how they're going to make it. And I think we prorated it for, what, four months?
Yes, it was, it was later, it was later on, it was like 70 something thousand. Was it, was it 40, maybe it was 47? So it was, it was later on whenever they, when they brought that and when they approached us with it. And so that's where the prorated funding came from. But the total for an annual funding of the county's portion is 108 even, is that correct?
No, sir, $108,380.
$380.
Art has committed to purchasing new buses, they've only been going a couple of months now and they do want to bring new buses in to serve our community. They're trying to make the routes work better. Our veteran service officer has accepted to be a liaison for us with Alamo Regional Transport and ACOG to try and help improve these services. But if we just stop funding it now, it's going to quit running and we'll never know that if it worked well for our community or not.
Right, I agree with that. And so we have a motion and a second on the table, it would be, need to be an amended motion to include the $108,000 and change.
Y'all going to pass the budget that way with a change?
That's not, I don't think that's that big a deal for Tom.
I'll reprint everything.
Well, not the whole thing, you'll just have to print one, one day would have to be reprinted because that money's got to come out of the general fund.
Motion still stands, including this amended $108,380 for the established public transportation service.
You still have your second on the table, okay, there's a motion and a second, all of those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Anybody opposed to that, motion carries. We will move to item number eight. And that is to acknowledge the adoption of the 2025 overall tax rate for Karnes County, Texas. Local government code 111.008B. Tammy, you got the next three.
Good evening, how are y'all this evening? When I did the 2025 tax rate calculation worksheets for the county, the no new revenue, which is basically the same amount that we, that we would need to collect the same amount of money as we did in the previous year, it came out to zero. This is for the road and bridge special and for the county. It came out to .0241058 for $100 valuation. That's the overall rate for both components. And that was what, that's the no new revenue, that's not going up any higher, the value did drop just a little bit, not much, but just a tiny little bit. So that's why the rate went up just a little bit.
Yes. And just so folks are aware, to touch on while we're talking about tax rates, there is a bill introduced, and I've not seen if it has passed through the legislature, that there, there was a bill to take the, take the no new revenue rate to 1%. And there was some talk of taking it to 0%. We are blessed to live in a county that has oil and gas, a lot of you out there saw this county run prior to oil and gas and it was not pretty. And one day, oil and gas will go away here and the county needs to be prepared for that, whether it's myself and these men sitting up here or a full new court. But at some point, the county's got to prepare for that and that would be crippling. I can't imagine what it does to a county that doesn't have and it has a tax rate at 35 or 36 cents or something like that, it would be crippling. So pay attention to what's going on in the legislature, make your voice known. We, we were still at the 3.5 no new revenue cap and that's what took it to the .24. Any discussion from the court? Item number nine, discuss slash take possible action, the adoption of the 2025 general fund maintenance and operating tax rate. Tammy?
Okay, the general fund, the M and O portion, because Karnes County has no debt, zero debt. So the M and O portion, the worksheet came out to 0.205903 is what it came out to on the worksheet.
I'll make the motion to adopt the 2025 tax year general fund M and O, which is maintenance and operations, 0.205903 per $100 valuation, valuation, I'm sorry, excuse my voice.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, anybody opposed, motion carries. Item number 10 is to acknowledge the Karnes County, that Karnes County has zero debt obligations for 2025. Therefore, there is no general fund and interest sinking tax rate, I mean, that's pretty self-explanatory.
We just are required by law to acknowledge that the county has no debt.
And item number 11 then we have, thank you Tammy, is a public hearing to allow public comment regarding the proposed Karnes County fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget. This is Texas government code 551.043, and this is a new thing that just, that we just, I mean, I learned about this week before last, probably Commissioners that were at the legislative conference as well. It's a House bill 1522 and we're required to put this in now, which is a taxpayer impact statement notice. I'm going to read item number 11 and item number 12, it's long-winded. I am happy to provide a printout of this for you if you want to read this. But Texas government code now, 551.043 through House bill 1522. The fiscal year 2024-2025, tax year 2024, adopted tax rate of .234499 per $100 value on the median homestead taxable value of $52,319 resulted in a $122.68 tax on the median homestead. The proposed fiscal year 2025, 2026, that's this tax year 2025, budget based on a proposed tax rate of .241058 per $100 of value on the median homestead taxable value of $53,446 would result in a $128.84 tax on the median homestead. The adoption of a balanced budget, if funded at the no new revenue rate in N R of .241058 per 100 of value on the median homestead taxable value of $53,446 would result in a $128.84 tax on the median homestead. The fiscal year 2025, 2026 proposed budget has been filed with the county clerk as prescribed by law and posted prominently on the Karnes County website at www.co.karns.tx.us backslash, backslash page, backslash Karns dot proposed dot budgets. And item number 12, to discuss and take possible action to adopt the Karnes County fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget. Texas government code 551.043, House bill 1522, taxpayer impact statement notice. The fiscal year 2024 slash 2025, tax year 2024, adopted tax rate of 0.234499 11 per $100 of value on the median home, median homestead taxable value of $52,319 resulted in a $122.68 tax on the median homestead. The proposed fiscal year 2025, 2026, tax year 2025, budget based on a proposed tax ratio of .241058 per 100 of value on the median homestead taxable value of $53,446 would result in a $128.84 tax on the median homestead. The adoption of a balanced budget, if funded at the no new revenue rate in N R of .241058 per $100 value on the median homestead taxable value of $53,446 would result in a $128.84 tax on the median homestead. This asterisk here fiscal year 2025, 2026 proposed budget has been filed with the county clerk as prescribed by law and posted prominently on the Karnes County website at www.co.karns... clerk as prescribed by law and posted prominently on the Karnes County website at www.co.karns.tx.us slash page slash Karnes dot proposed dot budget. Ms. Tapia, did I do that correctly? I mean, this was literally thrown on us, and we were scrambling. I went to Tammy last week, I went to the appraisal district, and I was like, "We've got to find this median, which is different than the average," and so I ran it by Ms. Tapia before we got it posted, and I think we got the thumbs up on it and going through that, etc. Perfect. Commissioners, do y'all have any discussion on House Bill 22 other than thank you, legislators, for making us do that? Hearing none, we will move to item number 13, discuss slash take possible action, the adoption of the 2025 road and bridge special maintenance and operating tax rate. Tammy, get to come back up one more time.
Good afternoon again. How are y'all doing? This is for this road and bridge special, it's different from the county, the M and O, this is the second part of that component that takes part of that, that adds to, to make those two components add to the overall rate that make that whole.
And that number is that?
That number is at, I have it on this last page. You would think I'd have it memorized by now. It's 0.035155 is the road and bridge special.
Special.
No new revenue rate for 2025.
Thank you, Tammy. Action item?
I'll make the motion to adopt, to approve, to adopt the 2025 road and bridge special maintenance operating tax rate, which is 0.03511 special tax rate per $100 valuation. Is that what I, did I say it wrong? I'm sorry, Judge.
If what? Yes, sir.
Okay. I apologize for that.
Yes, sir.
I'll second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Item number 14 is to acknowledge Commissioners' court will meet at 101 North Panamaria Avenue, Suite 200, Karn City, Texas, 78118 on September 23rd, 2025, 9:00 AM, right here in your Karnes County Historic courtroom. Item number 15, need a motion to adjourn.
I'll move adjourn. Second.
Thank you all for coming. Like I said, it's wonderful to see a packed house in here.
Yeah, thank you very much.